Record in progress.
That's what we were looking for. Call the order to the January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, city council meeting here for North Bend at City Hall and online. Firm the role.
All council members are present, your honor.
You very much. Council first item on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
Your honor.
You're moved.
Get a flag float.
We're trying to move this meeting quick. Um, is there a bet on here going on?
Thank you very much for that. Ms. Cohen, would you lead us in the? For that, thank you for the reminder. Work once again shows why she trolls what I do. Uh, now I believe I was about to say.
So moved.
Thank you. Consent agenda is motioned and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. It is unanimous. Thank you very much for that. Next item on our agenda is citizen comments. If you are here in City Hall or online and wish to address city council on an item not on tonight's agenda, this is that. You'll have up to three minutes to speak. Please start with your name and address for the record. We start here first at City Hall. So I see someone in the audience. Please come forward.
Hello, hello. My name is Deborah Landers. Address is one four six, one five, four hundred thirty-eighth Avenue Southeast. Today my goal is is to not be cut off. So. So I'm here to talk a little bit about North Bend art and industry. Um, I wanted to just give a quick review of what happened at the train depot for the holidays. So we've been renting the train depot for art activities and visibility for ourselves. Um, about three days a month right now. Um, we were there for Artist Sunday and the day before for Small Business Saturday. And with that, we partnered with the Train Museum and the Santa Train that was going on during that time. Had a really successful event. And with twelve um artists and their art wear and selling that as well as on Saturday, we had a demo of robotics by Robot U and an art activity on both days for kids that were waiting for the train. So again, really nice partnership with the Train Museum. And why I'm talking about this is first of all, tomorrow, we're doing our first monthly makers meetup. Where artists bring the projects that they're working on. They all come to the Train Depot and they work on their projects and they collaborate with one another for new ideas and for help with with problems that they might be having with their art. So it's our first makers meetup. We're really excited. We've got a lot of very positive uh feedback from artists on it. So we're expecting a pretty good crowd. So again, my reason for talking about this is because art and industry is looking for a permanent semi-permanent location to be able to hold events, festivals, bring more art exposure, experiences and education into our community, which our community is begging for. So while you're considering your plan for Park and the Train Depot, I'd really like to be considered or as one of the tenants in that building. We do play well with others. I think if you ask any organizations that we partner with, we are very flexible and very cooperative. So again, just putting it out there. We want a location. We think we would add a lot of value if we were downtown North Bend, visible to our community and bringing more more art and more art activities to people of all ages. Any questions? Yes.
Yes, I had a question. Um, you have another location currently. Maybe you'd like to tell people where that is.
We do not have a location.
You have uh down here on East North?
No, the property owner has actually changed their mind about what they'd like to do with that property. So we do not have that location. So.
I saw a pickup truck that looked like a Santa festival going on during the holidays.
Mr. Loud. Probably comment.
Oh, all right. You asked for a question. Uh, no, it's great. And uh, I look forward to hearing more about some of the projects you're working on, including the carousel.
Um, and if I can answer that question, do I still have time? So the carousel has split off into its own five oh one C three. Um, it's another nonprofit. It's called Snoqualmie Valley Carousel. We are still collaborating with them. We still feel it's near and dear to our heart. I actually transported that mechanism from a pistachio farm in uh Northern California, which I would not recommend anybody do ever. It was a horrendous experience, but we really want them to be successful. So um, they are off and running. They have their own team, their own board, and they're off and running, still refurbishing the mechanism itself and starting to design the carousel animals. So lots of good stuff with the carousel.
Thank you.
You bet. Other questions?
First of all. Thank you for the passion. Thank you for keeping it alive. Love hearing what's going on. Love everything that you and your team are doing. So well done. Um, the question I have is.
Music and having a music committee. Um, and we always partner. Our art is amazing. So there was a someday we would be all partnered in location, but as it is, we just really encourage all forms of art. It just adds life and creativity to our community.
Yeah, but there's always.
Thank you for having me.
Reed, do we have anyone online? With that, then we will move on from citizen comments to mission and committee reports. Start with community and economic development. Member Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm over here now. So much. We did meet today for the first time this year. Um, all our words are still the same. So also member uh gentleman right here, Brendan and Tim Park with me today. Uh, we had a bit of a short agenda. Uh, we started off with a commerce grant. Rebecca, um, it's all a positive thing. There's, I think it was six sixty-four thousand dollars. Is that number? Number? Very positive. Second on the agenda was our date for meetings, which we changed it to three thirty. Commit a needs and we'll see how that goes. Lastly, Brendan uh brought up a great idea, all agreed upon. It's all build trips uh in town to look at our um our build outs that have happened. Last few years. We're all informed, all on the same page. On all the more positive and very vital.
Great. Thank you. Very good report. Finance and administration, Mr. God help.
Thank you. The Finance Administration Committee met on January tenth at four o'clock at the City Hall German Room. We discussed a contract approval for the spring book financial offer, which will be on the agenda tonight. Uh, we discussed the First Amendment to the interlocal agreement uh between City of North Bend and City of Snoqualmie for Police Services. That is on our agenda. Uh, we discussed uh interim support uh by Robert Half International uh for supporting the Finance Department. They're low uh low on personnel. And then we discussed the account. Operations manager recruitment. We got an update on that. Um, we too did change our meeting time. We are now going to be meeting second uh Tuesday of the month. And Public Health and Safety is going to go to the first Tuesday of the month to accommodate schedules of each individual, which is first committee. That's all I have for you.
Still at four o'clock.
Yes, still at four o'clock.
Very much. And with that, Public Health and Safety, Mr. Rosen.
Yes, your honor, uh, we have not yet met. Uh, and as Alan just discussed, we will be changing our meeting times. So our first meeting will be the first Tuesday of February at four o'clock at City Hall. That's all, your honor.
Thank you for that. And for the record, you came across loud and clear. Transportation and Public Works, Mr. Launberg.
Thank you, your honor. We last met December thirteenth last year. And uh, we discussed several items. Um, we had a discussion on the purchase of spares for the uh no removal equipment repairs for the snow removal equipment. That was an interesting topic to discuss. Uh, we've had several items on the consent agenda that were covered. And one of the uh shining lights of good news is Mr. Marsinko, Mad Money Marsinko, once again brought in a local uh bridge fund program from the federal grant and for a total of one point nine one two. Our next meeting will be next Tuesday at. City Hall adjournment.
Very much for that. We're always. Those numbers. Uh, pro tem, Ms. Cohen.
Yes, we had a special city council work study, January tenth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M. City Hall talked about regional committee appointments for the year twenty twenty-three. And we tried to finalize the community survey that we hope to do out next month.
Eastside Fire and Rescue, Mr. God help. Back to you.
Thank you. Uh, Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors met January twelfth at at four P M. Um, at the headquarters. Um, very light agenda on that meeting. We only had one agenda bill, which was revision the audit officers. And we did get a little update from the fire chief. One of the most uh, one of the biggest things was we've been asked to uh buy an R, you know, fill out an RFP, you go ahead and uh help uh help the Duval Fire Agency and possibly bring them on as as a contract agency. So they've asked for um an RFP to be filled out and we probably have a special meeting prior to when that's to be done to be able to present that. Um, he did talk about transportation hearing. Um, we were in the meeting during one of the hearings um in trying to support that that we don't want to see the money being pulled for the highway improvement pension of the lanes. So that's also important. And we'll discuss that when we go through our legislative days. Um, the other thing was uh he noted noted that not only did we have some local people who became famous, but it looks like Eastside Fire and Rescue were the best of the valley uh twenty-two winner, or the responders were identified as the winner. Well, that was kind of nice to hear. Um, and then uh our our training tower that was put out uh in the Bothell area, um, looks like they made a mistake the stairs and they're going to be fixing that before we can actually use that. Big tour of that.
So it sounds like eventually another expansion.
Uh, another partner added or not partner would be a uh, they'd be a contractor to what we have with Mercer Island and then also with Shoreline.
We just reinforced one of the other things you mentioned, which was that uh governor's budget was uh pushing back the Highway eighteen is not the the intersection, but the further expansion and I along with all cities uh up and down the valley signed a letter of um many have been. Like you're right now. Thank you for that.
I would also encourage whoever's going to go to legislative day for here, bring it up to our representatives. It's it's really a dangerous section and should not be pushed back at all.
Mission report, Ms. Deming.
The commission last met on December eighth. The city's blue line, the housing need. Mission also moving their regular meeting scheduled Wednesdays. Mission wasn't able to meet on January third due to lack of. It will next be on January eighth, review and provide recommendation on the list. Parks Commission met on November thirtieth. Summary of back from the park survey and other input has informed the Parks Commission also met Monday, January ninth as part of a nominated by the city's park consultant site workshop between public input on preparing plans for William H. Taylor Park and Riverfront Park. Parks Commission will next meet January twenty-fifth, provide their initial recommendations to the element and to discuss the annual report to city council for twenty twenty-two commission activities preparation of their work. Economic Development Commission did not meet in December. Mission is scheduled to next meet on January twenty-fourth. You and that's on the draft.
Very much. Regional committees, council member, Mr. God help.
Yeah, one thing, just to um correct something I said. It wasn't Shoreline. It's actually Wooden Bill. That's our other contract. Just want to correct that. Another thing was that um I have now become a a voting member on the emergency manage county emergency management uh committee and they have officially voted me as chair for the caucus. So you'll be hearing more and now we'll get some more, be able to vote.
They'll learn better. Vote early, vote often. Ms. Miller, anything?
Um, S B G A will be meeting on this Wednesday evening. So I'll have some great information for you with the topic again is mental health awareness and how we can work together better as all cities in the valley and uh bring on all the nonprofits that are willing to work greater good. So it's quite exciting. So this is the second layer of a deeper dive.
Nothing at this time, your honor. Thank you.
Awesome.
Uh, the Snoqualmie watershed four will hold its first meeting of the year uh this coming week.
Last week, we held the first uh meeting of the S C A and welcomed a number of new members to the uh, the body. Discuss rules and uh deform and out to uh seed in that organization. We recapped some of the appointments, one of which was Mr. God help and mayor. Moving up in the uh, the assignments there and would definitely encourage anybody who's interested in serving on regional committees to uh keep an eye out because occasionally we do have new additions come available. We had a legislative update from the A W C and our uh our lobbyist. And uh, some of the hot topics or the hottest topic amongst local legislators was a proposal that had its first hearing today in Olympia, which is House Bill eleven-ten. Uh, House Bill eleven-ten, uh, what it does essentially is remove local jurisdictions ability to zone single-family homes exclusively anywhere in their jurisdiction. It uh would would mandate that you would must be allowed to put at least a four on any single building lot in a community. And uh, if you don't adopt the proposed legislation as it's written currently, this would include the city of North Bend. Uh, if you don't adopt their legislation, uh, that that it would be uh forced upon you at state level. So uh, please keep an eye out on that. And if you do get an opportunity to speak with your state legislators, I would definitely recommend mentioning to them that that's probably not a great idea. And that's just my personal opinion, but it was also the opinion of the majority of people who were at the Sound Cities Association.
Also the opinion of the mayor. Um, at one time, just to be sure that it mentioned, I thought I was going to put it in thousand more cities. So it came all the way down.
It uh, well, I was just having a discussion with Ms. Deming on that. In the document, it clicks between six and eight thousand. So either way, we're going to get it.
Either way, we're.
Either way.
Conflicts of six. And ten thousand.
Started, it's getting up six. It'll probably go down to the one. Uh, it's annoying. I mean, it's a space is there now. I'm in a page and uh hopefully we can uh stop it.
You have four representatives, State House, for heading north. Just reach out.
And County Board of Health will next meet this Thursday. And I have nothing to report. Meadowbrook Farm, L A is moving forward with cities of Snoqualmie, North Bend and Mount Cypress. And that will be moving forward as of March of twenty twenty.
Very much for that. Um, just say uh, you, Ms. Miller, for reminding S V G A. When Asian. Transportation Committee of the S V G A has not met lately. County Flood District uh Control District. Any growth management. Meeting this may Wednesday. So I drew a further report on that. Meaning why is E S R C Executive Board? This meeting of the year is this coming Thursday. On that one as well. Much. One. Productions. Number seven on your agenda is A B twenty-three dash zero one zero. This is a motion authorizing the First Amendment to the Police Services Contract. Mr. Miller, start us off.
Yes, uh, counselor, uh, all of our council members, this item is on page twenty-three of your and this has been discussed a bit in the past. Uh, the department had seen a need for quite a period of time for uh mental health crisis uh intervention when they are called to an event. And fortunately, uh, Lisa Cowan, our representative at the State Legislature was able to obtain a grant for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to support both the cities of North Bend, Snoqualmie for a position for the first year. And we did increase our biennial budget, uh, as did uh the city of Snoqualmie. They have uh already taken this action in front of their council. Who uh, addition incorporated in the budget. All of the numbers are in here. This is a funded one for later years. And we have the uh dollars shown in the staff report. This went to the Finance and Safety uh committee on January tenth, and they recommended to be approved. Be happy to answer any questions and the police chief is here to answer technical questions. He uh hoped will author this report and were fully involved. Person has been hired, has been uh very active and has actually very recently, I think, gotten a certification for uh us these negotiations and uh is really doing a great job. Be happy to answer any questions.
Very much for that. Chief, we'll we'll let you stay put there and ask questions come up. Create that. Council, anything clarifying before we move on it?
Yeah, if I recall, when we put it in the general budget, we had talked about ARPA funds being used for this is is that amount that's coming from the general fund?
Right. We have that identified uh here as the funding source. You'll see under uh the first page of the eighth agenda bill. Right below the subject. It's identified as ARPA funds and that has been tagged in the ARPA table of uh commitment of ARPA.
Still leaves, I think it was amount of over three hundred thousand dollars that they were to use for all mother things to talk about.
I'm sorry, that that number's not ringing a bell with me. I know I know that we identified this amount specifically for this.
Well, it may not have been fundamental was there was three hundred thousand left for some other uh senior and other types were going to be.
There were some other categories that.
Yeah.
That clarification, you were going right where I was going. I remember the ARPA as well. Got thrown off the general.
Is this mental health professional just going to be contracted one year at a time?
Avery.
And I think we got it in the biennial budget. So we're we're committed to two years this particular time through our budget.
The position is uh asked to be put it in the contract. So it will go with the services contract. It won't be here to you.
Just a clarification. So while we expect minute, we're only approving within our. Plus, we do have a contract uh renegotiation.
Your honor, Mr. Rosen has his hand up or he's hit the wrong button once again.
Mr. Rosen.
Yeah, thank you. Um, the audio was a little garbled. So Alan, I think, might have asked the question that I was going to ask, uh, but I'll re-ask it. Since this is ARPA funds, I just want to make sure that the amount that the council set aside this summer for the mental health for the teens and younger, that we were going to be working with some of our local social providers like Encompass and others. I believe that was three hundred thousand dollars. I want to make sure that this does not interfere with that. And that money is still there.
Believe that this is identified separately from that amount. The ARPA funds.
Okay, so the three hundred thousand still there. Okay, that was all. I couldn't hear the answer because it was garbled audio wise. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, uh, we should move to public comment. I don't see anyone here in council chambers. Reed, do we have anyone online wishing to comment on this site?
We have no one online at the time.
With that, um, finance and administration. So I think, Mr. God health, this is you.
One second, let me get to.
Age twenty-three.
I had it here and then I forgot that I had to move to the next one. Just try to look at that one. Okay, make sure I was up there. All right. So motion to approve A B twenty-three dash zero one. You're authorizing the mayor to execute First Amendment to the interlocal agreement or police services between North Bend, Snoqualmie for behavioral health specialists in the form and content acceptable to the city attorney.
Second.
Second, thank you, Mr. Elwood. How health, anything further?
No, I mean, I I think I we've got some funding for it. Um, I'd like to see how this works. We we, this was that's I guess going forward and we're still hoping that uh down the line, we can get some more funding um through on as we move forward. So that's, well, I gotta say, look forward to it passing though.
Mr. Elwood.
Just to uh odd this moving forward, behavioral health is a critical part of our community and the fact that we're recognizing it and spending money on it and focusing on it through our police services is is very, very important. So I hope it do pass. Thank you.
Council, Mr. Rosen, anything, Dan?
Nothing, your honor.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am in full on support for this for quite a while now, and I'm very excited to see what the future holds with the help we need for our constituents out in this city.
You, Mr. Dawson.
I have nothing but support. I think this is fabulous. I congratulate all involved and look forward to it. Hopefully, right, coming through contract language and being a permanent position within our local enforcement community. I think it's.
You, Mr. Launberg.
Thank you, your honor. I think the uh individual that was hired is outstanding. And she has proven herself in the field. I look forward to uh hearing more success stories as she moves forward. It's an excellent program and I think that uh shall be uh It's an excellent program, and I think that, uh, shall be, uh. Be happy that, uh, North Bend is leading the way along with our sister city, North, uh, Snoqualmie, North Snoqualmie. And, uh, we look forward to, uh, more successes going down the road, so. I know you guys are appreciative of her talents and that she's been out working with you, and I see her out in the field with you. And, uh. Doing what you're doing, it's a great, big program.
I'm really excited about this program, I am hopeful that. Our citizens that are in mental crisis get the help that they need, having this professional, knowing. How to help them, where to send them with resources that she knows of. Instead of just please showing up no offense. And sending them to jail, and they'll get the proper care, and that will help our citizens in Snoqualmie and North.
Very much, and I'll just note that, uh, Council, one more incentive to go to SVG A this coming week. You will be one of the presenter. All right, motion, uh, before you is to approve A B twenty-three dash zero one zero, authorizing the mayor to execute a First Amendment to the Interlocal Agreement for Police Services. In North Bend and Snoqualmie for a behavioral health specialist. In a form and content separate to the city attorney. In favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries, it is unanimous, thank you very much for that, Council. Very much looking at that motion well into the. Item number eight on your agenda is A B twenty-three dash zero one one. This is an ordinance amending North Bend Municipal Code fourteen dot oh four dot oh five oh. Regarding SEPA threshold. Says Ms. Deming, but I believe we have a chip.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor. For tonight is a two-part proposal for title for environmental policy, part one would adopt a reference rather than re. A list of categorical exemptions in state law minor projects. Project meets the exemption Environmental Policy Act. Uh, review is then required. This is a checklist with supporting materials that we get, uh, from applicants. Whereby the city then considers environmental impacts. From our decisions. Current code has a long list of projects from previous version of state law. It's now out of. Not adopted amendments to this section of code since nineteen. And then the second part is to adopt able standard and flexible. Category. Again, this only applies to certain types of minor projects, otherwise SEPA would still be required. November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and made a recommendation that you could be on Table One, the Agenda Bill. Code. For these flexible thresholds. You see, the Planning Commission recommended a lower to mid. Proposal. Threshold based allowed range. During the public hearing, the master builders did comment in support of the amendments. Cost savings, lining, it provides. They provided a support letter and also provided one to. Leave. Another comment email was also submitted and cited in the. As detailed in Exhibit B, there are overlapping environmental actions built into the municipal code already. All of the supporting documents submitted with the checklist. Could still be required for the municipal code. So staff feels that there's no additional analysis. Be lost, and for these minor projects. SEPA does allow one additional fifteen day comment period. And all projects that trigger SEPA also have a fifty day notice of application. Comment. ED Committee reviewed the amendments at their December twentieth. New meeting, and they recommended approval placement on the main agenda.
You. So clarifying questions?
So if I understand for the public's reference. There'd nothing go forward unless they follow the checklist, which would be similar to having to do a SEPA, so any, um, risk to the public or. Would would be mitigated.
So they all under the threshold, a minor project. Listed in the, in the state law or on the table if all under. Those threshold that we're proposing, so for example, a single family residential development of ten units. They do not have to do a SEPA. Um, what we're saying is they still have to provide. Eotech or traffic report, um, wetland delineation. Provide all those supplemental documents code requires them. Um, SEPA's, uh. Been added to over the years and. Looted in some ways because our code has enhanced environmental. So it's another. For the public and another layer of like a shoreline code lapses areas. So. Those those minor projects that fall under the. Not.
Mr. Elwood.
Thank you for that, I just. I have a little deeper in the comments, just so my simple mind understands it. What I'm hearing you say is that we have all the SEPA. Elements already covered with our existing code, so there is nothing that would get through. By ha- adopting this new proposed threshold. Any, you know, anything below the proposed threshold.
Correct, I mean. It's not anything is bulletproof, but we have a number of. Mechanisms and down to a clearing and grading permit. Um, where we employ these regulations. Control. Um, we, we have a lot of layers of. Lot of. Lot of times, most of the. Nation of non. Not even mitigation. At their site. Further.
Thank you.
Jamie, can you speak to how this might be making things more efficient?
Yes, and I think Master Builders had, uh, thrown out some numbers as far as residential and the cost savings, it's really time is money. Um, we can do all these reviews concurrently. Um, sending out a notice of application, probably three hundred feet. Offering that. And. Review. Comments, this is just an added layer of process posting in the paper.
Awesome, amazing. John Beck, what's going on, um, Mr. Rosen?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Uh, we have anyone, there's no one here in chambers, Bree, do we have anyone in line wishing to speak on this item?
Yes, we do, Your Honor, um, we have Ben Taylor online who wished.
And unmute yourself, please start with full name and address for the record, you have up to three minutes.
Hi there, folks, um, my name is Ben Taylor, I'm with the Master Builders Association of King and Snohomish Counties. Um, I actually don't live in North Bend, although I wish I did, it's a beautiful place. I live out in Seattle, one oh six Florentia. Um, I just wanted to come here and say tonight, uh, on behalf of the Master Builders Association. We're one of the largest, uh, member, uh, home builders associations in the United States with nearly twenty-seven hundred members. We really appreciate the work of city staff and planning commission so far to make these updates to the North Bend Municipal Code. Um, we believe that, uh, you know, increasing these SEPA categorical exemption thresholds. Will address, uh, the need for more housing choice and affordability in the King County region. Um, staff and other council members have, have kind of said a lot of my points, but, um. To, to, to reiterate, applicants, when they apply for SEPA, um, exemptions, or sorry, app- applicants, when they go through the SEPA process can end up spending thirty-two hundred dollars. Uh, or more, that's our official number, um, however, the, the longer that these processes take. Uh, the more money it, it requires for our builders to hold onto land. Um, and overall, it just increases the cost of housing, um, and. In general, removing this duplicative regulatory structure will make throughput. Move faster in your city, decrease housing costs and decrease time that city staff spend reviewing, uh. Again, duplicative forms that they, that they really don't need to be spending time on, so that's all, um, I very, very much appreciate the opportunity to comment and hope you'll have a great night.
Bree, anyone else? Thank you. Everybody got the opportunity to see her trying to figure out how to get, get work. With that, uh, let's see, this came through Community Economic Development, Ms. Miller, can I get a motion?
She made. Hey, motion to approve A B twenty-three dash zero one one. Ordinance amending North Bend Municipal Code, Chapter fourteen dot zero four dot zero five zero. Related to categorical exemptions for State Environmental Policy Act SEPA. Clients as a first and final reading.
Second.
Second.
You. Second, Ms. Miller, did you have anything to add to the?
Really don't have anything more to add other than the fact that I really think this is probably a bit overdue, it'll help make some work more efficiently like that was spoken into. Uh, hence less duplicating of time and city staff efforts. Plus, it may very well help aid in, um, boring cost of homes in the future.
You. Bob Beck.
No, I think Mary. Tried to very well, and I look forward to, uh, streamlined process and have your staff.
Council, any other? Rosen. Hey, motion before you is to approve A B twenty-three dash zero one one, an ordinance amending North. Code, Chapter fourteen dot oh four dot oh five oh. Related to categorical exemptions for State Environmental Policy Act SEPA. Clients as a first and final reading. Favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries, and it is unanimous, thank. That. Sure that. And, uh. Next item on our agenda is item number nine, A B twenty-three dash zero one two. This is a motion authorizing software licensing and maintenance agreement. Springbrook Holdings for financial software. Oh.
Evening, Council. Twenty twenty. Death and discussion. About furious and ongoing problems. That has affected all the. Armed by the. Twenty twenty-two dash. New finance. Me. Board. Worked with the finance staff to identify the weaknesses and problems. Prevented staff from. Building and. Intimely and efficient. I also ask current staff capable to. Problems they had with. After meeting with the prior finance. Mayor Rob and the city administrator. From that vision can no longer meet. Worked with the staff in our. May and June of. Following discussion with the finance administration. June seventh. Council at a work study on June. Financial software. June twenty-fourth. City received two bids which are. Did, I did reach out to other. vendors. Overall, the significant cost difference. Mean bids due to the inclusion of permitting and licensing. That was included with. Springbrook was able to buy integration cities current committing software. Consideration of the cost savings, addition. Analysis and back. Satisfied users. F is recommending the city select. Each finance staff member has met several times. Twenty twenty-two. Virtually. Both vendors or demonstration. Model. F is also. While it appears both companies have. And improving customer service. F believes Springbrook deliver the product. Finance staff. Previous experience. Additionally, staff believes Springbrook. Options. Springbrook's security. He has. Had with. And will. So, um. He also met. F make committee last week on January, and actually. That's item with. B. In November, one December, and we actually went and had the. Went over that. They asked question. What was, what was the value? Is. Tyler. Earned. I believe we answered the. Forward. Let's see what else, I do have, um. B Williams, who's a senior account manager, I think virtually. Have. I wanted to identify. Oh. Name, this is paid for. Islam Sum is. Then. Prior. Years down the road, we pay annually, that will be split up. Here the. The waters.
I'm, I'm absolutely here, if there's any questions, uh, I'm B. Williams, Senior Account Manager with Springbrook.
You be. Um, yeah, let me jump out. In front. I, I walked in the door. Already being asked for the previous finance director. Alerting me to how out of date. Some our system is, so this has been a long time coming, uh, we've been after it. Council approved this. Uh, originally in the budget, the previous biennial budget, and so we've been a long time trying to get here, and so. I am very, very happy to see that we're getting to this day, I hope, I hope we arrive. Council, any clarifying questions for either Ms. Williams or Richard? Hearing none. Um, Mr. Godhealth.
Thank you, motion to approve A B twenty-three dash twelve, authorizing the mayor to enter in a software licensing. Maintenance agreement with Springbrook Holding LLC in a form approved by the city attorney.
Second.
Pushing in a second, Mr. Godhealth, anything, Dan?
Um, no, I mean, it's interesting, we're going back to a software we had before, um. You know, and it seems like we, there were some positives, and then as we tried to. Grade, we had some limitations, so it seems like with the, uh. The. Loud version, we have a lot more options, and hopefully it'll be much easier for the staff, and hopefully the. Stuff flowing in from our. Customers, so to speak, our residents, um, is much easier, and we can add maybe some services down the line that can be done through. Web as opposed to coming in here.
Certainly expect old Ms. Williams to hold the. System. Mr. Elwood, anything, Dan?
Yes, thank you, um, I, I. Out updating outdated IT solutions is a, is a thing that many. Communities are having to deal with, this is a step forward on a lot of different fronts, I think, our finance side, it has been in conversation for quite some time. Uh, what I'm really excited to see pan out. Are the efficiencies that, uh, we were told we will realize from staff, because there's a lot of weight. Mr. Gold's, uh. Back right now, carrying that, um, the training mechanisms, and it should be easy software to adopt, even with high turnover. Um, integration seems to be, is what we were sold on is that it's an integrate, it's a seamless type solution. Customer support is another big critical area that, uh, I think will benefit from, so. I look forward to the, the new software adoption and, and realizing all the cool fun things that we've been convinced that, uh, so will yield, so thank you.
You. Other comments, Council? Hearing none. Uh, let's see, the motion before you is to approve A B twenty-three dash zero one two, authorizing the mayor. Or into a. or into a software licensing agreement with Springbrook Holding Company LLC. Form as approved by the city attorney. Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries and it is unanimous. Thank you, counsel. I believe that brings us to the bottom of our agenda, counsel and administrator concerns and initiatives. Godhealth.
Nothing, your honor, tonight.
You, Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I just wanted to say tonight I was able to, let's see. Public hearing for the House Bill one 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 zero. I listened to that with. Five o'clock and I just want everybody to know that I'm staying on board with reviewing with the bills that are coming through. This is a huge year on so many different levels. I want us all to be very vigilant and very aware and let our constituents know how it'd be to us here directly in this town of eight thousand people. It fits right into the need here. So just so you know, I will encourage people to talk to their legislators, not happy without it.
You, Elwood.
Nothing tonight, your honor. Thank you.
Mr. Jocelyn.
Nothing.
Mr. Murray. And nothing for Mr. Landback. Mr. Rosen.
Nothing tonight, your honor.
You, Ms. Colan.
Yes, I had the great privilege last week to be part of the tenant trail park groundbreaking ceremony. And in case you didn't know, this is going to be a mountain bike trail being built in three stages. Going to be accessible from the city of North Bend by bike, by foot. And it's just another great open space that we are so fortunate have available to our residents.
Great. You know, that was, that was a fun event. This time we've had gold shovels in quite a while. It was a lot of fun and, and a pitch for it. Could you manage not just have yourself? That was very good, Mr. Elwood. Oh, one item for you. We want to be sure and point out that the city in collaboration with Republic Services will be holding a special yard waste recycling event this Saturday, January twenty-first, eight AM to noon. Attending the. Forty-two dot thirty. Inquisition pursuant to R C W forty-two dot thirty and ten one B and like the bargaining pursuant to R C W forty-two dot thirty and forty-four. We do anticipate forty-five minutes maximum. Will be no action taken after the executive session. So we will end the recording at this. Thank you all.